Okay, guys, six o'clock, let's get started and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got everybody in the serum this evening. On the regular agenda, one change, we're gonna table number eighteen until next time. And everybody here to have that conversation. Alright, any other changes? Anyways, I'm looking for a motion to accept the regular agenda, a set change.
Make that motion.
Jeff makes the motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
He has a second. Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consent agenda, any questions on that?
I brought one up for you.
Yeah, on that one, there, on letter H, game site authorization for Horse Lanes Club. We just need to make sure the box says twenty-one is checked off also.
Black check in.
So it's just correction there.
Good.
Yep.
Alright, anything else?
Anything else?
Alright, I'm looking for a motion to accept the consent agenda then.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, Stephanie makes the motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, what, for a minute, meeting minutes from last time around, any changes or corrections on that? Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion to accept them.
I will make a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes from May sixth.
Okay, if anyone makes a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Stephanie has a second. Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. For comment time, do you think you want to chat about tonight?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name's Alex Baker, live on Visto Street. Just had a couple concerns I wanted to express. I have in contact with Stephanie and Jace. And it was over concerns with Sunset Valley addition. And had to do with the, what should we call them? The conditions for approval. And Stephanie and Jace both are really helpful in regards to the next steps. Because the, how it was written with the fence for that addition is incorrect to create a proper buffer between the current residents and the addition. So I just wanted to, I guess, bring that to light and see that followed up on when the ID comes through and that's included. So Stephanie is aware of that. The other thing that I wanted to ask about was item number seventeen on the agenda tonight. And it's not specifically the item, I guess, it's just the concept of it, the speaker system installation, which is great, I don't think anybody would argue that that's needed, or not needed, I think it's a great idea. But my concern is, you know, any frugal homeowner getting bids for stuff would get three bids or more. I'm curious if that's what goes on with the city, if stuff is bid out or whatnot. Because of recent purchases I've noticed, such as trailers for the city and mowers, it seems that one quote's presented. Is there, is that usual? Can that be, how does that go?
So on is typically, it depends on type of product or type of item, some will go off of state contract bidding or group pricing, so it doesn't have to go through a bidding process, it's already gone through being processed. On the speaker installation, it's a smaller amount, and that's working with the exact same company that we've been working with on speaker, on any of the technology, like audio visual in here. So it's just continuing off of that.
Okay.
And it's a smaller amount, smaller amounts like that, we don't typically bid out a whole lot. Now, if we're talking something that's thirty thousand dollars, or hundred thousand dollars, two hundred, yeah, we bid them out, or it has, you know, we'll receive quotes from other places, or we'll go off of the state contract pricing, or there's a group called Sourcewell, it's collaborative cooperative pricing, so we use that.
Okay.
Different avenues.
So, for example, the mower purchases, that would be a little bit of a larger number. From what I can understand, the pricing given was just simply from a dealer in town, is there...
Typically, that's off of either the state pricing, or like I said, the cooperative type pricing. Quite often, that's what is given to us, and other times they'll price out the different ones. The ones presented to council is the one that was the best bid.
Sure.
So our best quote.
Okay. Are those, are the quotes that aren't accepted, or like, aren't present, are they available to the public?
Yeah, if they've obtained quotes, or if we're asked about, we can say, here's the ones that we have.
Okay.
So sometimes they get a quote, multiple quotes, and sometimes they get just the one, because like I said, based on the pricing they have.
Sure. Okay.
But also, the value amount, the larger value amount, the more likely you have to do a bid. Or either a bid or obtaining multiple quotes, there isn't a necessary requirement for smaller amounts, like a couple thousand dollar thing, doesn't typically require that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the comments, Alex. I was just gonna say, we have had, I've had a good conversation with Brent and Jace about the issue, and we definitely, it's on our radar.
Yeah.
And so we'll be, we will work on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Al?
I just have a question. What is the threshold? I think this is a pretty good issue that you raised. What is the threshold for bids?
I believe it depends on the type of project you're doing, like construction projects, is it half million or two fifty? Typically, they're up there.
For bidding out construction projects, two hundred thousand?
Two hundred.
So two hundred thousand, so you're talking in that price range, like that range.
So if you had to spend ten thousand dollars on something, would you go with it?
Typically, you don't have to. A lot of times when we're doing, like, the bigger, more substantial things, so we are getting quotes, multiple quotes, and we're getting bids like that, though. And like I said, a lot of times, if we're going off of the state contract pricing, or from like cooperative pricing, they've already bid that stuff out, so they already have that price point to work with. It's, and it's typically a lot lower than what, like, if any of us were to just go buy the same piece of equipment on our own, it's typically lower.
Or even to go out and try and get a quote, it's still cheaper to go with the state or the cooperative.
Yeah.
As we ran on that before.
Same thing with vehicles, they say, here's the state pricing, and here you go.
Yep.
And that's based on what is going to us from the dealer.
Alright, anybody else?
I guess I'd just add a comment to make, as pricing thing's been interesting, I agree with you. And the Sourcewell thing's been brought up multiple times. As a former state employee, my wife still works for the state, they also utilize Sourcewell sometimes, but not very much actually, because they tend to get more quotes even purchasing apartments. And I mean, I bought quarter million dollar pieces of equipment through the university, so I mean, not inconsequential purchases. But I just encourage, you know, to pull up for some quotes, and to take a minute and get three calls, doesn't take very much. And in fact, there was a time, they made us call around to get hotel quotes when you can, the state rate was fifty-five bucks. They made us call around and get, you know, quotes for hotels. So I mean, that's my new dollar amount in the grand scheme. So I just encourage you to go and do some bids, because even the state doesn't just go off Sourcewell.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, the state is a separate one than Sourcewell, and there's other quantities and stuff out there too like that. But we typically work with those, and I said, we are pricing out typically what works.
Okay. Anybody else?
Thank you, Martin.
Okay, we'll move on, and Sheriff's update. He did send out the late to the, I don't know if we want to go there, just wait to learn.
We can bring out this one.
Yeah. Okay, I can look through it, and if you have any questions for next time, then let's make sure we ask those. Larry Brenton, you've got number eight.
Okay, I'll just touch base on this, and then Jim can expand on this. We've been working towards trying to figure out, as I mentioned at the last council meeting, in regards to load factoring and the special assessment policy. Jim and I have been working with Jeff and Cory on this, to just figure, okay, are there other ways we could do it? What we're at right now is a potential, or one approach would be to break out local and regional projects, which we've been trying to really emphasize on when we're dealing with improving districts. So local improvements are those improvements, like a water sewer, street, streetlights, different things like that, storm sewer, that are contained to like a new development or a specific neighborhood, they're tied to a very confined area. The regional improvements would be, like, a project encompasses multiple neighborhoods or areas. Examples of that would be like Wall Avenue, or they may be city-initiated projects. Like, for example, like I said, Wall Avenue, both projects there, sixty-sixth Street, sixty-third, sixty-fourth Avenue, and variety of other ones, may fall into that regional category. For a regional project, what we're working towards is, one, it's broken out from the local. Two, it'd be having a modifier, and we're condensing down your, inside a load factoring of many different categories, like six or seven different categories, it's focusing on residential or other, not six or seven different categories and different values. So I'm trying to make it simplified and easier to follow and easier to calculate. Also, then there'd be a component that is project driver. So the project driver would add for each, so like if it was a residential, it adds a little bit more. Example, a project driver would be, say, a new development happened, and a regional project had to happen. That new development, if they drove the project from happening, or to happen, that new development would have that project driver. So we're working towards that part. The area that we're still working towards trying to figure out where the best, what the best way to address is, is how do you address schools and churches? Does that fall under other category or residential? So residential would be, let's say, a one, one unit. Where other would be calculated based on so many units per acre, and those other categories would translate into acreage. So if you had one acre of land, residential would be equivalent to, or would be a one, where one acre of land of any other use would be six, so it would be equivalent to six units of residential units. Does that make sense? I'm trying to explain as directly as I can. So when you do that, if the properties are within like a project driver, that residential would be a one and a half, where the other would be a nine. So like I said, it works easier, and I'll have some examples to lay out how it works hand in hand. But like I said, we're trying to simplify it from where we had churches would be a load factoring of twenty-five, commercial would be a fifty, schools would be forty-five, and all these different layers. We're trying to tone it down and also keep it simple. That's been our overall goal. I think we're out there in being able to have something that we can present to the council, or hoping to be able to do so in June here. Am I missing anything, Jim?
No.
I know you explained very nicely.
On the local versus regional, splitting the projects out, so you don't have a regional part of a project, you have a regional project and a local project. Because the regional projects are the ones that seem to affect the residents, more of the existing residents, whereas this is a way to kind of quantify, to make sure that there isn't some of the local bleeding over to the regional, and it's more local is this, regional is this, versus doing them together, just this kind of accounting and keeping it more clear, I guess, between the two, so.
Can you explain local?
Did you have any kind of a table you wanted to show tonight, to break it down or not? Not tonight, no. No. So in the past, we've done the, you know, local, done the sanitary sewer mains and water mains by front foot. I think it's gonna stay that way, it's gonna at least be protoplus that way, do the services by the each, I think that'll stay that way as well. Street has been in by the front foot, and that'll stay that way. We get into the lift stations, the stormwater ponds, and that type of stuff, we get it, then we'll get into the each, and that will be broken out as the regional portion of it. So it may get a little tricky with some subdivisions, just because there's gonna be regional stormwater within that, but if it doesn't affect the existing residents, I think only more towards the each and the benefiting areas of that, so.
Have we, like, discussed this with the special assessment committee at all? Like, have they been involved in any of the conversations?
No, so we've been trying to get through some of the vetting, to make sure that it isn't, in lack of a better word, a waste of time in getting together, because, you know, we've had good ideas, taken them back, ran them through the calculations, and it didn't work. No, it didn't work. So rather than getting everyone together and doing that, we're trying to come forth with some more concrete numbers to try to value the time.
Once you guys have more concrete ideas and numbers, are you guys planning on getting them involved before it gets presented?
We will be having some discussion.
Okay.
It'll be more on one-on-one conversation with them.
Yep.
So just A D C any issues. So I'll probably be bugging Alan Martin and Brad here in not too long. But like Jim said, we wanted to really vet through what actually works, because we have gone through this for months, just going, okay.
We had a couple of misfires already.
Yeah, so we thought we had the silver bullet, hey, this is great.
It's a, it's a pretty big undertaking, I mean, I feel like that's why, you know, we hired a consultant. So I understand that it's a huge undertaking to go forward. But I would really like the special assessment committee to, once you guys have it nailed down a little bit, to visit with them too.
Yep.
Okay, anything else on that one, Brent?
Nope, that's all I have.
Mr. Mayor, I mean.
Yep.
I just have a quick question, Brent. It sounded to me, based on your description, like, by trying to simplify, like, maybe more might be pushed towards residential? Is it, am I misreading that, but that's what I thought I heard you kind of imply.
For local?
Yes.
Residential takes on the improvements there, like they would anyways, just like we did before the policy. For other, on a regional project, the regional, I believe actually, regional, it doesn't take it on as, it's spread out more. We'd have to show you the examples of how it plays out, because each development, each project is different. And that's what we found, because we were trying to group everything all together into one approach, and we were finding that one approach would say residential would be basically subsidized tremendously by other. And another approach would be the opposite. So that's why I would have to show you case by case situation of it, but that's why you broke out the regional and local, and it'd make it a lot easier to work with. But I could, you know, when I do catch up with you, I can show you.
So is your question that the original policy as presented, the knock on it was that it favored the commercial over the residential? Kind of equating that a little bit more?
My concern with what Brenton was talking about was that, that was my take from what he said.
Yeah.
And that's what I was trying to clarify.
Yeah, because that's what we had seen with the policy as it was written, was that the commercial and whatever kind of shouldered the burden of, I shouldn't say shouldered the burden, but it seemed like it wasn't equitable across the board. It seemed like that was more than what the residential was. So I don't know if putting more on it is the right word, but in a way, it is kind of putting more on it.
Just spraying it all over.
Just to equate it a little better.
I know where your office is.
I know. You're welcome to come in, anytime.
I appreciate it.
And Jim is working on scenarios of how does it work with each one, his staff is working on the scenarios of, so we can see, how do these break out, how does it?
It's the regional stuff, it really gets to be a challenge.
So Al, why don't you, like I said, just give them, let's get a chance to get some of these scenarios put together, and that way you could, it'll show a little bit easier what I think you're trying to look at.
I know, I understand. Just one more quick comment, if I may, now I'll shut up. Some of the, one of the things I've noticed, and I suspect the residents have as well, where they're, they build a house, and they're special assessed for what's going on in their house, then there's another development, or paying for their house, then there's another development comes in or another change, and then they get special assessed again. And I wonder if there's not a way to say, if you're gonna buy this house, you're gonna pay for, this is what your specials are for a project for your house right now, and you should expect something else, because we're building another, another future development's gonna come up back here, so you pay it all at once, if they can do that. And I don't know if that's even possible.
Well, so how do you predict that? I mean, well, if somebody doesn't build for five, six years, you're still, you're forecasting events that haven't really taken place.
But like concrete, from what I understand, and I have a correct.
Right, and that would have been a second division, and that would have had some regional component to it, but it might work in some circumstances, I won't deny that, but in some of them, wouldn't be guessing, and is that fair?
Yeah, no, I'm just asking, I'm asking the question.
Right.
I think some of that too, Al, comes from like the capital improvement plan, and once the specials gets more streamlined, it'll be more of just a pretty high level estimated, you're in these districts. And we're working on automating some of that, just internally with some mapping and, you know, toggling of some layers on maps, you know, so you can see how it is. How it gets distributed beyond the office is probably to come, but it needs to be run through the beta test first, so.
And we might be able to do some forecasting on the regional components probably better with the capital improvement plan. It's just when we get to the local, that would be the harder, you know, if we're talking like a local or partial regional, if they're involved in something else, I mean.
I mean, locals should stick with the one, it's the region that will tack on to the local.
Yeah.
And I think notification obviously is the key, I think, is what you're getting at too, Al. To try to make sure that our new residents that are coming into the city have all the information available to them when they're making decisions.
Right, but we want to have some accuracy with the two, we don't wanna, right, because it doesn't come pass either. So I'd say, we want to be sure when we predict this stuff, we've got some accuracy involved with it as well, so.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else you guys?
No.
What was the action for it?
Alright, here's some more discussion. Alright, move on to nine. Jim, you got that one?
Alright, Mr. Mayor, council. So several residents of the area around Lost River Road and Meadowlark Park had reached out to the city in previous meetings, talking about some cities and some speed around that Meadowlark Park area. So the city council took the action of reducing the speed in that area to the speed of one fifteen, and also installing slow children at play signs in that area as well. So both of those have been done. There is some concern that I heard late last week over the location of some of those signs, I haven't had a chance to get out and look at that, but we did talk about where to put them before we, before this public works people put it up. And then I was told earlier tonight that deputies have the speed trailer out there for enforcement, not for enforcement, but for...
Can I let you know that the speed trailer is actually on the, it's on the way out?
So I live on Lost River, if you don't mind, I can explain a little bit. It is when you're driving out of the neighborhood, the speed trailer is, and it shows twenty-five, which, to me, doesn't make a lot of sense that you would be driving out of the neighborhood. I mean, it's, either way, it's a good thing to have it, but the positioning of it probably doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
So where is it in a position of Diedrich?
To the north of Diedrich.
It's to the, okay. So it's not really in the area where the problem is?
No, so I would think it should be on the other side of the road, as you're coming into the neighborhood, probably closer to the park, where it turns to fifteen, and then turn that from twenty-five down to fifteen.
Sure.
Can we get that fixed?
I'll talk.
Thank you.
Did we ever move the one sign I asked about?
It's been brought up to, but it works.
That's noted.
Which, which one?
There's a sign behind a tree.
There is a fifteen mile per hour sign installed that was being blocked, so.
So it's been brought to their attention, and they're already moving it, it relocates and relocate a pole.
Okay.
Yep, so they are aware of it, so there was.
Okay. Well, I put this on the agenda, I've had a lot of residents from Lost River reaching out to me regarding just the fact that that road now, Wall Avenue, is being worked on and the increase of traffic. So I would like to entertain the idea of putting down the speed bumps, if we can do that.
Temporary speed bumps?
Yep, I understand that they go against the horns, but I think that this is a different situation that we can maybe look at safety over that for the time being. So I would just like to make a motion to go ahead and place those speed bumps. I don't know, do you have a map, show me kind of maybe where we can?
You forgot something.
Huh?
I forgot that.
Okay.
So who's running the thing?
The G I S F.
Yes, if you would do that, that would be fantastic.
Yeah, if you could get the G I S F, that'd be great, but I would like to make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
So I would say that you put two rows of them in, kind of by those curves. And no, this is also an acknowledgement that there's additional traffic coming from, the traffic coming from...
Can I blow it up a little bit? I'm sorry, I don't have, I can't see.
No, go the other way.
Which one?
Uh, towards the...
Let me drive.
Towards the park.
Let me drive.
Eight point east.
I didn't blink. So this is the area in question here, so the limited discussions, or limited thought that I had on this was probably like one in here, and maybe one in here.
Do you think before the park, closer to Wild Rose?
Like up here?
Yeah.
It gets into the...
The curve?
The curve. I'm trying to find somewhere that's relatively straight, so maybe that's maybe not a bad spot.
My thought is, is it's fifteen there, and you see a yellow speed bump, you gotta slow down anyways to navigate that speed bump. So if it's on a slight curve.
Yeah, I mean, the other spot was, this is pretty straight in there, but.
My question with the fifteen mile an hour speed limit, should you expand that to further north?
Permanently or for the detour duration?
Just for the detour for right now. I mean, I don't think the fifteen mile an hour signs stay permanently, do they? I have no clue.
They were to be permanent at the, when they were erected, but, at the park. But if it's something that you want to entertain, to put fifteens up to Meadowlark, or you're thinking of left of Wal?
Yes.
Just swap out the fifteens with twenty-five, or swap out the twenty-five or fifteens?
Because like I said, right now, you're about three properties in from the park right there to the north, and it's behind a tree, and...
My concern with that, and I'm not saying anything, is that is that people will tend to lose interest in the fifteen by about here. And then they will just go fast, till they get down to here, and then they'll realize, oh, bumps. So that's one thing that I do, maybe fifteen down here, I'm not sure, I just, it gets to be a lo, this is a long stretch.
Yeah.
And you may come in here and see the fifteen and go, I can go fifteen, and then by the time you get to about here, yeah, I'm done going fifteen. So it gets to be a little bit of enforcement too.
So coming from the south, is there only one fifteen mile an hour sign?
Um...
So very south end, south of the park, or southwest of the park, I should say.
Yeah, there's one over here.
There's, is that right?
I believe so, yeah. Yeah, we didn't, I don't think there was another one in that, that round.
So something I do point out though is, if, you know, a concern I would have for the council is if you keep expanding areas or having more, you know, say fifteen mile an hour zones, this could create a domino effect where you could see this across the city. And you can even see it where it could happen throughout even this neighborhood, so.
Well, I mean, for me, the, we are encouraging the use of the park. I mean, it's the, one of the bigger parks in town. This park is very, very busy. I've actually driven over there to let my son play. And I would say, if we're trying to encourage children and families to be walking and utilizing sidewalks and having walkability, I do think that it is imperative that we do look at the safety of this. So, I mean, I would be inclined to put these speed bumps up every summer by the park. And not just because we have a lot more traffic because of Wall Avenue, because I will tell you, the residents were reaching out to me before the Wall Avenue project started regarding this. So that's, those are my thoughts. I want to make sure that, you know, we want people to be outside and enjoying the community and enjoying the park, and making sure that safety is top of mind as well. So that's, that would be my motion to do these in the summer. I know that they're not feasible in the winter because of the snow and those things, but putting them up in the summer, right there by the park, I think it would be the best option.
So I would say this one and this one.
Yeah.
I'd say just the two. Yeah, this one, like you said, the curve should alleviate some of that.
Okay.
I agree with Naomi's sentiments. I mean, it is a park area, I think it's distinguishable, I think this area is distinguishable from other areas, or even maybe other portions of the development because of the fact it's by a large park, and we're encouraging a lot of... of foot traffic, and there is a lot, so I, I agree that, I agree for the safety issues.
In the area that I look at, that's not a park, but that has a park, a school area, Freedom Elementary in West Fargo, on Fourth Street East and Twenty-Sixth Avenue, right kind of by Rustad's area, there's a road, and then there's a tabletop, and then around about, you go across the tabletop to, to have a speed limit sign that shows your speed and flashes at you when you're over it, and I think that's helpful for that area also. I know you previously talked about that the tabletop would be possible, but, that area has a little bit of a curve too, and you slow down enough to navigate the tabletop because you know it's there, yeah, right there.
And, you know, I know, Brenton, to your point, you know, but I mean, I feel like that's why I've been really looking at, you know, newer developments coming online and trying to make sure that we are looking at the road design and figuring out where we can add safety features that are maybe a little bit more permanent, unfortunately, it wasn't something that we thought about during this point in time, but, yeah.
I'm just asking, just, we've had those requests before, and, you know, at different times, or different neighborhoods, and you'll have times where, you know, in this situation, you have a park, which, yeah, makes sense, we've had other times where residents have come to us saying they want this or that, and there isn't anything, any feature beyond that, so.
Right, well, I mean, I feel like that, this is my justification.
And I was referring to when you're going beyond the park, so if you're expanding that fifteen mile an hour, reducing speed or things like that, it could create a change in action where you'll have, you'll have requests across the board, so, I'm just making sure council's aware of it.
All right, so, first and second motion, I'm putting down two barriers, I guess, on the road there, speed bumps.
Not barriers, speed bumps.
Speed bumps, I'm sorry.
Because we're barrier.
Any other questions or concerns on that? Okay, all right, so then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, okay, Jim, got that one, uh, next one, Case, you got the next one?
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the application before you today is a public hearing for a variance in which the applicant, Thompson Holmes, is seeking some relief or modification to the setbacks and law dimensional standards within the SR three zoning district for the remaining lots within Maple Lakes Estates. The properties in question, which are listed in section four point four in the staff report, were platted as a part of Maple Lakes Estates subdivision in two thousand, or twenty twenty, and along with the plaid application, the property is rezoned from a agricultural to a median density residential. A number of building permits has been pulled, with several lots occupied by new residents, however, there are a handful of remaining ones, again, identified in the report, that the applicant is seeking to, for consistency purposes, build the rest of the development out to the previously applied R four zoning district. The SR three zoning district requires a minimum front yard setback of twenty-five feet, a rear yard setback of forty feet, and a side yard setback of ten feet, with twenty-five feet for street side yards. Additionally, the SR three zone has a building coverage maximum of thirty percent. The applicant with the R four district, which is defined as a thirty-foot front yard setback, a thirty-foot rear yard setback, and a side yard setback of eight feet, with eighteen feet for the street side yards, and a lot covered by fifty percent. The new ordinance under the non-conforming laws for existing plats allows for a reduction of minimum setback requirements only upon granting a variance by the city council. The planning and zoning commission held a public hearing last Tuesday to review this application, and we voted four oh to recommend approval of the variance request for the remaining lots held by Thompson Homes within Maple Lake Estates, and with that, I'll stand for any questions, the applicant and owner is here, signed as well.
I'll open up the public hearing. Yeah, so basically, just so I got it straight, so you guys did this plat back in twenty twenty?
Correct.
Yeah, well, I don't know why this probably wasn't grandfathered in, but, go ahead.
Yeah, no, thank you, yeah, appreciate it, Mr. Mayor and City Council, so, yeah, when the new ordinance was in place and it was grandfathered in, honestly, it was a miss, didn't realize that it was only for R six, or I would have brought this up at that time, because, yeah, essentially, with the new ordinance, we've got roughly seventy to eighty lots left, we have either built or closed seventy homes out in Maple Lake Estates, of which seventy percent of those are of plan types that will no longer fit with the new ordinance, so forty-eight of the seventy that we have built would no longer fit with the new ordinance, so, it's a big shift, as well as a big price point change, if those plans wouldn't fit on those lots.
Right, and the commissioner went four oh on that one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't allow that to be grandfathered back to the previous one, that's what that was plotted for.
So, who, who owns the ones that are not highlighted in red, that are still, have not been built upon?
Uh, Dabber.
That's it?
Yep.
Okay, fair enough, and he's gonna do it all on his own then, too, then?
Correct.
Separately?
We'll see a new application similar to this sometime in the council.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
No questions.
I have none.
Okay, anybody else have public questions on this one? Okay, now I'm gonna close the public hearing, I see no reason not to grandfather this similar to the previous.
Make that motion.
Okay, Jeff makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
He does a second, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Jim?
All right, Mr. Mayor, we'll settle in here.
Yep, you got a few here, so, brace yourself.
All right, so, first item we have is water sewer stormer street improvement, actually, sewers, water and sewer improvement district twenty twenty, what is it, jumping ahead.
Start off strong.
I know it, yeah, just out of the gate.
Pace yourself here, pace yourself.
So excited, okay, so we have water sewer stormer street improvement district twenty twenty-four dash three, which is Deer Creek, second, and Deer Creek, third additions, we have the preliminary engineering report, which you authorized at the last meeting, this is a project that does not have any effects besides the developers, to them, the district was established at that time, so the report is, goes through, like I said, it's the introduction of the city and existing conditions of proposed improvements, proposed improvements are sanitary sewer mains, services, and manholes, water mains, services, and fittings, hydrants, and piping, storm sewer mains, laterals, catch bases, manholes, clear water, crosstalk piping, the two minutes paved streets with curb and gutter, concrete sidewalks, concrete shared use of fat, seating, hyper-multi, and street lighting, stormwater pond, and the stormwater pump station, this is one we talked about last week, that's gonna discharge to Sixty-Fourth Avenue, project that the plans and specs were approved last meeting, it's out for bids right now, so this will then run to the, to Drain Twenty-Seven, so, basically what this is, is you're just approving the proposed project, and then directing, directing the preparation of plans and specifications, so the estimates of this project that was provided by the developer and reviewed by my office with the soft cost added to it was, or is, about three point five million for the total project cost, and this is a local assessment, this isn't a regional, outside of, outside of the district boundary, there's no existing residents in it, so, my request to you tonight is to approve the preliminary engineering report, and then direct the engineer to prepare the plans and specifications.
Okay, any questions for you, Jim?
No, not for me.
Jeff, anything?
No.
All right, I'm on for a motion to accept the resolution approving the preliminary engineering report.
I will make that motion.
You want to make some motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Jeff does a second, all right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries, and I'm on for a motion for the resolution directing engineer to prepare the plan and specs.
So moved.
Steph makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Mary does a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries, okay, Jimmy, you have the next one?
All right, Mr. Mayor, next we have water sewer stormer street improvement district twenty twenty-two dash twelve, which is a river's edge second addition, this project is currently under construction with completion later this year, the first thing we have is a landscaping allowance, we were provided a letter, or the city was provided a letter from the developer to formally request change order to increase the pond landscaping and irrigation system budgets in the twenty twenty-two dash twelve rivers edge second edition projects. The initial budget, as specified in the bid package, was seventy-five thousand dollars for pond landscaping and two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for irrigation. They are proposing to increase the landscaping, the pond landscaping bid item to four hundred twenty-five thousand, increase of three hundred and fifty thousand, and increasing the irrigation from two hundred and twenty-five to three hundred and twenty-five thousand, increase of a hundred thousand dollars. The landscaping plan for the pond perimeter and development serves as a crucial element in creating a showcase area for the neighborhood, it is a developed vision that this beautifully landscaped area will not only enhance the aesthetic appeal of the neighborhood, but also foster a strong sense of community pride among the residents. With the recent acquisition of the pond perimeter by the city, the developer says they have a unique opportunity to integrate the landscaping into their project, the design and master planning efforts have been carefully focused on promoting outdoor recreation and activities with a strong emphasis on nature, enhancing the pond area with thoughtfully designed landscaping paths and ballard lighting will further elevate the overall experience for residents and visitors alike. Furthermore, the expansion of the irrigation system for the city-owned pond area will not ensure, not only ensure the vitality of the landscaping, but also provide valuable collectivity for future phases of development, this is long-term sustainability for the entire, for the entire area, so, they also wanted to note that these budgets were established with a bid allowance, so when the project was bid, the contractors had a number that was assigned, and it was a lump sum or a allowance bid item of a hundred thousand and three hundred thousand, or whatever it was, and they would like, like I said, they would like to increase that, so, they did provide us, I believe, you have some renderings in there, that you can look at to kind of give you an idea of, of this area, it's quite a bit, quite a bit going on in there, but that's what they think from their, from their letter, so, maintenance has been a pretty big discussion item on this, because there's a lot of pond lot, and even in the letter, they recognize that the city has purchased some of the pond areas, so, I believe that there, it was discussion to have a maintenance agreement for who does what for these areas, because the irrigation will serve as a HOA lot as well, and they plan to, or they're requesting to pull water from the stormwater pond, the only other place that that's been done in the city is with the high school for irrigating the fields, so, this would kind of be a different type of situation, and then, just the maintenance of this throughout time, you know, this is a big, big, after, project for that matter, just, just to get it all in there, so, that's something that has to be, has to be worked out.
So, this be the first area in town that we would have to, like, blow on pipes then, for winter freeze-up?
So, so, some history, there is irrigation in Lost River, it is irrigated through Casserole, Casserole's a supply, but there's a meter for those areas, they water, Casserole sends a bill to the HOA, at the end of the year, the meter is in a frost proof, so they take it out and blow the lines. Terragarden's third addition doesn't have.
Who does that?
The HOA does that.
We have an HOA agreement with the HOA and developer for Lost River for that maintenance.
Do we have an HOA here, though?
Yes.
Okay.
The question is, though, this is a lot more expansive than what the HOA in Lost River is, so, to get back to, go to Terragarden's, Terragarden's does not have HOA that I'm aware of, they have irrigation in some of the common areas there, but the meter was never put in, and it's never been turned on, because there isn't anyone to bill, to bill to, and the city wasn't interested in taking that on themselves for the HOA lots.
So when you talk about the maintenance agreement, I guess, I guess, this looks wonderful, but my primary concern is, I mean, who is maintaining agreement, when you say maintenance agreement, do you mean between the developer and the city as to who's taking care of lots?
So for this one, it'll be the developer, city, and probably the park district, because the park district will also have land associated with the amenities in this area, so it's gonna be a similar agreement to what we did in Lost River fifth addition, it's just gonna have, it'll be more robust to cover the stuff that Jim is mentioning tonight.
Does the park want to win over it?
I don't know what's included for the park, but they'll have, I mean, they're gonna have to be made aware of it, because they'll sign off, they would have to sign off on the agreement.
So, I don't, I can't speak on that, the park would have had a conversation from the developer on this request, however, what I would suggest is, if the council was interested in considering this adjustment to our allowances for those areas, I would suggest that it be contingent upon a maintenance agreement that's acceptable in the city developer and HOA, and it sounds like park district too, to be intact before that is accessible to the project, so, and the main thing is, the developer's expectations, what they've indicated the staff at least, is like, mowing is more aggressive, maintenance, keeping it nice.
I mean, when they say that, and who's doing that?
And that's where we're saying.
I mean, I guess that's my.
The main, that's the point of the maintenance agreement, because our expectation that city is a certain level of service for mowing around ponds, you know, we try to keep it up, keep up on them, but, we're not gonna be out there when the grass grows inch, it's gonna be more than that, and, when we're mowing, we're focused on functionality for the pond, we're not, you know, aesthetics of how pretty it is isn't our top priority, we want it to look nice, but we, we're not gonna go and patch every single rut we have within, around Stormmark Pond right away, where the developer, their expectations are probably gonna be a lot higher, they're going, they want that nice rescue, same thing with the irrigation system, we're not gonna maintain the irrigation system for them, it would be on the HOA and developer, that's like how we have it in Lost River, so, that, that's what we just want to make sure, protect the city and not having a whole bunch extra on our plate that we haven't been prepared.
I mean, I feel like that's what HOAs are for, you know, to be able to beautify their little area and have.
Yeah, and part of it might just be allowing the HOA to hire a third party to mow it, and meaning to mow the city's property, so the city's not, doesn't necessarily have to do it, it's just a, a matter of allowing access onto the city's property, because they'll have HOA fees for, for that sort of thing, if, if they want that high level, because they're gonna have to be of the understanding that the city is not going to put this at the top of its list every week to get mowed first or whatever, and so if they, if they want that high level, then, there's likely gonna have to be a third party that's doing the maintenance, whether it's normal mowing, cleaning out the, or blowing out the irrigation lines, whatever.
So basically, right now, we're kind of looking at approving this landscaping allowance with being contingent on getting that maintenance.
Being able to have an acceptable maintenance agreement.
But that would be a maintenance, like, forever, right, like, as long as?
It would depend on how we structure the agreement, our staff, yes, would like it to be in the HOA's hands, you know, if they want to have a, a higher maintenance, you know, expectations and everything, then, okay, they just handle it.
We'll just put it in there too, we'll have an established term, but they'll also have the ability to terminate early, and then if it does terminate early, we'll just say that the city will maintain it similar to other lots, other pond lots in the city, meaning it's not gonna have that high level of care that they're expecting, if the, if the agreement terminates early.
And, and just to be clear, maybe to the residents who are listening too, this increase in the landscaping allowance is just going within the special assessment district, which will be paid for by the property owners within the, and I just had one other question.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just gonna say, Jim, remember, it's maybe not the same, but, remember when we, we were concerned about some slumping issues by a pond?
These are flatter, the pond slopes are flatter on this one.
Okay, I just see the, I see the pathway, which looks very, very nice, but.
Lost River, yeah, Lost River is sloughed.
Okay, I just didn't want to have that same problem.
Yeah, this is, this is a flatter design than that.
Okay.
I guess when you say the, the agreement gets terminated, Lucas, like, why, I mean, wouldn't it just be an agreement that's put in place, like, you guys, this is on your HOA?
I mean, that's how we'll establish it, but I always want the city to have an, if things aren't going well, I want the city to be able to terminate the agreement early, if it needs to.
But.
If the HOA runs out of money or something, I don't want the city on the hook for having to pay a landscaper to mow it every week.
Well, yeah, I don't either.
So, so that's, it's just a, it's just in there protecting.
It's a failsafe.
Okay.
It's the what if.
Because I mean, if they're gonna want to spend the money on that, I'm assuming the residents that are living there are gonna be like, hey, what are you spending our money on if you're not maintaining this, you know, to the HOA?
Correct.
So, I don't really want to have any part of that.
I agree.
All right, so what you want us to do here, Lucas, like I said, prove this?
All right, so you want us to do here, Lucas, like I said, approve this?
Yes, so like, like, I don't know if Jim has anything else to add, but if you want-
The only thing that I have to add is just that there will be a contract time extension coming if this does get approved because the amount of work that this adds at $100,000-
You said an extension?
Yes.
I figured so.
And, and then in order to get this installed by the completion date, we will be coming back at some point with, probably sooner than later, with a contract time extension. So just throwing that out there, that when you don't double it.
Make sure that we do it once unless we have some other stuff, you know.
This project was ahead of time.
Is anything ever ahead of time?
They did a lot of work last night.
Or does it just get finished at the right time?
Right, fair enough.
And this estimate includes the pathway that we see in the picture? I mean, the increased amount is including all of those amenities?
The increased amount or time, amount, money?
Amount, money.
Yes.
Okay.
What you see here is what I was told is what it, it's within reason, it's a rendering.
Right, right.
Jim, is the path separate? Wait, come back later?
Not that I worry about.
Okay. I thought it might-
Okay, any other questions on this? Otherwise, I think I'm going to look for a motion to accept the landscaping allowance with it being contingent upon the maintenance agreement with the city.
Sure, I'll make that motion.
Anyone makes a motion, can you get a second?
Second.
If you need a second, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you're curious on that one, next one you got there? Jim?
All right, Mr. Mayor, so the next item we have is this, this, we have developer reimbursement request number three. The developer has provided invoices for construction engineering and engineer of record work for this project since they're, they had, the project was designed by their own engineer, not by the city of Horace. This is the third one that the city's been presented with. This is for work that is summarized in the attachment on the end. I can go through a little bit of that if you'd like. There was some work for environmental wetland, credit purchase coordination, sovereign lands permit coordination, pre-construction meeting, preparing the construction contracts, review shop drives, engineer of record duties, construction meetings, correspondence with, with the contractor, preparation change orders, correspondence of the EQ, funding, right-of-way administration, et cetera. So this is all costs that would be rolled into the project and special assessed only to those projects.
Okay. Questions on that one?
So the request is for, request is for 144,586.36.
Did you mean any problem with that?
No, we, I went through it.
Yeah, I was going to say, as long as you went through it.
We went through it.
Okay. Then I'm going to look for a motion to accept the design engineering reimbursement that Jim presented this evening.
I'll make the motion.
Jeff makes a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
If you need a second, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Change order number two.
All right, Mr. Mayor, second thing, the third thing we have here is change order number two, which increases the contract amount for Rivers Edge Second Water Sewer Storm and Street Improvement District 2022-12 in the amount of 149,9218 cents. This change order is for a unit price increase for bid item under 144. Let me get to the right thing here where we talk about that. So we have a unit price of, for the bid item number 144, which is the masonry column and walls. This item was erroneously listed as part of, to be bid as a one each during contract review and prior to the bid opening. CC Steel, the subcontractor performing the work, inquired with the developer's design engineer as to how many sets of columns there were intended to be installed and the, and included in the plans. The request was addressed via addendum number four, changing the unit of measure from each to lump sum, so that each got, got lost in the translation. However, item, addendum number four didn't provide the additional clarification that there were three sets of columns for the walls and entrance monuments to be bid. CC Steel submitted a bid of $67,000 to the prime contractor and other bidding contractors that was reflective of a cost of one set of columns and walls for entrance monuments. So the contractors were requested to pay an additional $134,000 lump sum for, to account for the other two sets of columns and walls. We did have conversations and we did, they were providing, and the contractors did provide us with the correspondence that they had, that it wasn't clearly addressed, and that the number, the dollar amount that they're requesting fits in with the other bits that we saw. There was just an error in that part of it. So there's another part, item number two was pond work stoppage. So on November 2nd, 2023, the owner directed the work stoppage from 11:37 AM to 4:27 PM for all work within the pond. Stop, work order was issued as a result of outstanding easement right-of-way issues that were not resolved at that time. Contractors provided invoice for downtime during this work stoppage for a total of $15,092.18, which includes a 5% general contractor markup. As per the EJCC C700 standard general conditions specification, Article 16, the contractor shall be entitled to an adjustment in the contract price or extension of the contract time directly attributed to work suspensions. The specification is attached to this. So that, I think, is addressed in maybe the next couple items here when we finish up those easements. That's right? So this is something that's just in the construction contract. So the city wasn't comfortable with them working on that portion of the pond while these easements were kind of outstanding and directed them to stop working on it. As per the contract, anytime the owner decides, the owner directs the work stoppage, they're entitled to, to the compensation on that. So this is for 11, 12, 1, 2, 3, 4, $5 of downtime, or whatever it was.
15 grand for $5.
Yeah, it's live equipment. I mean, there's a breakdown on there too, so it's not just, they were provided. So they had, let me get to that since you're asking. They had nine item, nine pieces of equipment out there, an excavator, two dozers, four tractors, off-road dump truck, and another off-road dump truck. So they have it all broken down for unit, per hourly rate and the idle hours on there. So the time just jived with what we had for onsite and the direction of email correspondence of when to stop and when to start, so.
So you don't see anything?
No, that was by the, by the contract, they're entitled to it. It's, it's just the way that it is. And then, yeah, so those are the, those are the two items on there. This is another one that goes directly on those lots and 149,000 or change, so.
Okay. Any other questions? I'm just going to look for a motion to accept a change order number two as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Jeff makes a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Stefan does a second, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, Jim, you got the next one, permanent easement?
I do not.
I'll, I'll take the easements. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so there's going to be several easements that we're discussing tonight, the, the five for Rivers Edge Second Edition were because of design changes that needed the easements after the plat was recorded. Typically, we, we have the, any easements dedicated on the plat. Again, because of design changes, we had to do it after the fact. So I'm not going to read through all of them, but the easements are from Rivers Edge Estates, so the developer to the city, so the city can install storm sewer and drainage type easements. So the first one that I'm looking at is for storm sewer, again, from Rivers Edge Estates to the city. The second one is a, a permanent drainage easement, and that's, they needed storm sewer drainage to the, the stormwater pond. The third one is a storm sewer easement from Rivers Edge Estates to the city. And the fourth one is an access and utility easement from Rivers Edge Second Edition, or excuse me, Rivers Edge Estates to the city. So, so those four from the developer to the city, Jim's office has reviewed the, the easements. They were requested by the developer, so my office drafted the permanent easements. And then I believe they were all in your packet. Each one of those easements has an exhibit to it, so you can see where the, the property's located. I don't see any issue with these, like I said, typically this is done just on plat dedication, but if the designs change, so here we are today. And then the fifth one for this one, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, is from the Horace Park District to the city. So the park district will have to approve that easement, but that's for informational purposes for the city.
Do you want us to keep these separate as far as-
I keep them all together. I mean, they're, all these easements are from a different grantor to the city, so it's more or less the city just be aware that you're getting this additional property from the developer and from the park district. And so if you just want to approve it all in one motion, that is just fine. We will then work with the other entities to get them signed and recorded.
Right. Any questions? I'm going to look for a motion to accept the permanent easements as they are presented here.
I'll make that motion.
Jeff makes a motion, can I get a second?
Sure.
Go ahead. Anyone need a second, all right? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Jim, you got 15.
All right, Mr. Mayor, so this is a developer reimbursement number three for the Cup Creek State, Cup Creek Second Edition. Similar as Rivers Edge Second Edition, the project was designed by the developer's engineer. Developers provide invoices for construction engineering and engineer of record work. Would like to be reimbursed through the special assessment district. Same thing attached to the summary of supporting documentation. So work by the design engineer summarized in the attached email to your memo. The invoices were reviewed by the city. Invoice number 43013, work performed by Cass Collin Electric had previously been reimbursed. So the total request of this amount to Cup Creek Development LLC totaled $77,374.64. So kind of the same, same items as they were working on the other ones, as they went through the construction of it, so.
Okay, any questions on that? Okay, I'm going to look through-
You said everything was kosher with it?
Yeah, we went through it.
All right, any questions? Otherwise, I'm going to look for a motion to accept a design engineering reimbursement as presented.
So moved.
Yeah, anyone makes a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Stefan does a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Jim, you got the next one.
All right. Mr. Mayor and council, next item we have is 65th Avenue, this is the Water and Sewer Improvement District 2024-1, 65th Avenue Water Sewer. At your last council meeting, we were directed to, directed to prepare the plans and specifications. This isn't a relatively large project, so we're able to get that done and get it out for a bid. So what I'm requesting of you today is to approve the plans for the 65th Avenue Water Sewer, also known as Water and Sewer Improvement District 2024-1, and direct the auditor to advertise for bids. This is the water and sewer connection between the existing Southdale Farms Fourth Edition and 66th Street. This will allow for the development of Sunset Valley and allow for Southdale Farms Eighth and for the school. So there is no street component to this, there are no service component to this, this is getting the mains in so that the wastewater and water can get through that, through that corridor.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions for Jim on this one?
Nope.
Okay, I'm going to look for a motion to accept the resolution approving the plans and specs.
I'll make a motion.
Jeff makes a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Stefan does a second, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're going to the resolution directing the auditor to advertise for bids. Look for a motion on that one.
I'll make the motion.
Jeff makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Can I get a second, all right? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Jim, you got number 15.
All right, Mr. Mayor, so the city, bring up the right one here. So the city received. Willow Grove is east of 66th Street, north of the, east of Southdale Farms Sixth and north of the existing Holman Farm on 76th, actually, it's on McKinnis Farm right now. So we have the resolution creating the district, so if you look at, bring up the second page. So the area highlighted in black is going to be the first phase of the Willow Grove addition. If you go to the next sheet, we have the, we have the district boundary. So right now, the district boundary is basically that quarter or that, part of that section. And the reason for that is the Cup Creek Way, which starts, starts, if you can follow the C my pointer, here in this intersection of Christiansen and 66th Street, it continues and it comes back and loops up with Cup Creek Way. So this would be our half-mile collector street. So that's why the district is, is as big as it is. Christiansen has already been built to that point, so everybody to the west and north is paid for a portion of that major north-south, or a major east-west collector street. So this project is proposed to be done in phases, but the first phase includes that connection to Cup Creek Way. So first thing I'm requesting tonight is a resolution creating the improvement district as shown, and a resolution directing the preparation of the engineer's report.
Okay, questions on this one?
Are there multiple owners in that district?
No, there's, there's, so there's, it's two, whether the Tom McKinnis and the other is BT, right, or are you?
BPG.
Yeah, so they've requested the services.
Both the existing properties.
To the, the existing property, the only one would be that old farmstead, and he's involved with the other side of it, so they, developer too.
The stuff to the south there?
It's all developer owned.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So it's basically all developed, this is all developer property, even though it's regional?
Yes.
It's two different property owners.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
All right, I'm going to look for a motion to accept creation of the district.
It'd be Water Sewer Storm and Street Improvement 2024-6.
I'll make the motion.
Jeff makes a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Anyone need a second? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm going to look for a motion to accept the resolution directing the engineer to prepare the preliminary engineering report.
I'll make the motion.
Jeff makes a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Stefan does a second, all right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Jim, you're off the hook here, I think, Lucas, you got one.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, more easements for your viewing pleasure. This time, we're going to head to the Ubacha area in Eldorado, is that Eldorado Edition area? So the first one is a sidewalk easement, need an easement from EAV Family Holdings, which is the, the Visto family, easement from them to the city for a permanent sidewalk. And then the other two are temporary construction easements, one from Kelly Ryan Properties, so Kelly Visto to the city, and then the other from EAV Family Holdings to the city. Those easements were sent to the council as well in your packet, and the easement exhibits are included. These ones came from the city engineer's office, so they are aware of the, the easement area and prepared the, the easement exhibits for this one. So if you have any questions on the, the scope of what is included in that, you can ask Jim, but that's it.
So the permanent sidewalk easement is on the south end of the project around the existing lift station. There is no, around the, around the existing lift station on the south end, east-west side of the road. It's a, we have sidewalk on Ubacha north of the Visto Edition, and obviously, there's no sidewalks in Visto Edition. So this allows us across a little sliver of land to continue the sidewalk out to the street, so you can actually get to it.
15 by 15 feet, if you're wondering.
15 by 15 feet.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Where, where is the construction?
The construction unit is beyond the right-of-way so that we tie in the grading limits.
Okay.
Beyond the right-of-way, because we build the project from right-of-way to right-of-way, but we need to, if it's, this is going to actually be a little bit of a fill section, so we have to feather out so that it properly drains and slope and whatever. So that is for that work, plus it allows us to get, to be able to build that at the right-of-way line without being trespassing.
Okay, cool. Any questions? Okay. Can we put these together, Lucas?
That would be great.
Okay. When do you want, or A and B together? I'm going to look for a motion to accept the easements as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Jeff makes a motion, can I get a second?
Sure, I will, second.
Anyone need a second? All in favor, say aye.
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 Fire Hall Events Center, do you want to?
With this here, this two-fold part, one is the addendum to a rental agreement with the fire hall, or with the fire department here, or district. The second part is for, the reason for the addendum is to install speakers in the back half of this room. The speakers would sync with your microphones and shouldn't have interference with the recordings or anything like that, and it's to have Tricorder install eight speakers along the back half of this room to help with sound, so when we do have a larger audience, they'd be able to hear you better during the meeting. And like I said, it should help with the recordings, and they'll, it, well, my, the microphones you have in front of you here will project that sound out to the back half of the room. It does get pretty difficult to hear, and like, tonight, we tried to move folks closer, but we have had times where we've had this room full, or fairly full.
If they're connected to these, though, if something, like, I know we have a lot of problems with our live streaming, is that gonna?
The live streaming, we actually had Raytech here to try to, try to resolve some of the, the airnet feeds or whatnot. The recording still work, still has been working. We, we've had, where we've had hiccups under recording have been where we've had to try to reset, or it's lagged, and we think it is tied to the airnet, so that's why we had Raytech here to try to troubleshoot that.
Okay, but like, the microphones won't go out if we're having trouble, if they're connected?
No, live stream is a separate deal than this, so. It should still work, 'cause it's your sound system tied to, and the recordings have.
'Cause what we wanna do, and if they put up the speakers and stuff like that, we wanna make sure we all get feedback on the microphones.
Yeah, and that's why we have the proposal we have in front of you, so the proposal is to have Tricorder install eight grid speakers that produce the volume towards the rear of the room, and a lower volume in the front of the room. Cost is three thousand two hundred thirty-three dollars and twenty cents, and Fire was okay with this, as long as we did the addendum to our rental agreement. Basically, summed up version of that is that we install the speakers, if we ever wanna pull them out, or remove them, we bring it back to, you know.
The original?
Yeah, the condition is there, which I think, I believe is fair, you know, if I was having property, I would expect the same.
When do they think they could be able to get on that?
I'm assuming probably within the next few weeks, but they're, we were hoping to be able to get this ironed out here the other week, but then Fire asked to have an addendum to rental agreement, and we figured it'd be best to just hit pause until we have that rental agreement brought to council.
So, what about all the speakers that are already installed?
Those are Fire's speakers. Yep. We did, we did ask that.
Okay.
Yep.
It's best not to monkey with that.
Yep. So, we have our own separate ones.
Any other questions?
Are you planning on, like, eventually, when we're not here, what's our plan? Are you gonna take all this equipment, or what are we?
We'll address that in the future thereof, if this equipment works in a new setup or not, or we, that'd be undetermined, so. If, if it makes sense and is able to use somewhere else, then yeah, we could, and then we just have to replace the ceiling tiles in there, disconnect them properly, but we navigate that at the time.
That's a few years down the road yet.
Same thing with, with the cameras and stuff like that, if we had to use it, or it's the best just to keep here, so.
Okay, anything else? I'm looking for a motion to accept the speaker installation on the event addendum.
Combine them.
I'll make that motion.
Stefan gives a motion, can I get a second? Just a second, okay? All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Jim, nineteen.
I'm not good at eighteen.
I can't hear anything, buddy.
Sorry, I'm just trying to keep notes. All right, so, things have picked up.
No.
Yep, rain slowed it down, things have picked up again. Rain's slowing it down, so anyways, River's Edge Second continues on, Cup Creek Second continues on. We have construction conferences towards the end of the week for the final pavement lifts for the Lost River Fifth Edition, Southdale Farms First, Southdale Farms Third, final pavement lifts. That'll start within the next couple of weeks. You might see some curb and gutter removals starting next week, and then maybe the following needs some paving on that. Sixty-fifth Street, or Sixty-Fourth Avenue and Ubacha are out for bids. Those bids will be open next week, so hopefully we'll have those for you at the following meeting. Shared use path, contracts have been sent for the next phase of the shared use path in front of our office, in front of Casey's, continuing with that. Wall Avenue, they're making good progress on that, believe it or not, on the west side. I was told this morning at our staff meeting that ninety percent of the concrete on the first phase is, is done. There's some colored concrete that needs to be put in between the shared use path and back of the curb, and the streetlight bases are now in, they haven't put the bases, the poles up or anything, but the bases are in, the conduits in, and all of that, so there's a base going on west, west of Lost River Road, so they are making some pretty good headway on that, and they thought the pipe work would be done today if it wasn't done already on that west side, so then it's just building a road. Sixty-sixth Street has picked back up, sixty-sixth Street, they've got gravel to Mount Sixty-Fifth, and they're working their way north to Sixty-Fourth Avenue. That one is scheduled for pavement, not quite a hundred percent sure on when that's, when that's gonna be right now, they have to get the road built, road built first. And then, you saw the county started their work last week, kind of a mess of things, and they'll pick up again here, I believe this week, and start going south on County Route Seventeen. That's what I was told this last week, so. Things are starting to pick up, we're gonna resume our meetings with Councilor White every other Thursday to give her a, for her portfolio, so.
Councilor Tridolly asked me about the paint, the striping, there was a, it went a little too far out on my bounds.
You shouldn't paint on many days.
I was, I was told earlier today it's a temporary, it's a temporary paint, though.
I don't think it is.
But, okay. But they said they're addressing that.
Thankfully, they caught it soon enough, and it looks like they corrected the issue before it got too far.
On the plus side, too, if it isn't temporary, if it is the permanent, in a winter or two, it'll be gone. 'Cause it, with the snowpaws and all that, they have to repaint every year.
Right. So, what I will tell you is that I noticed that running up today with the striping, and that's a county job, so, see what they say. I'm usually not one to say that's somebody else's problem, but sometimes you gotta take it when you get it.
Yeah.
Well, at least I haven't heard of any vehicles that got painted. I stopped before I crossed.
Yeah, so, and then we'll restart the printed summaries next month, things actually picked up.
Okay, any questions?
Thanks, Jim. All right, Brian, what you got?
The only thing I had is, as you can tell outside, the water tower is being painted, or not painted yet, but.
They're working.
They started work today.
Are they cleaning it out, the inside of it?
There's interior coating.
Yep.
And I was watching him use a shovel to clean it out today.
Yep, they're cleaning, they're cleaning it all up.
Serious?
Yeah.
Oh, interesting.
Yep, so that'll be a couple, I believe, a couple weeks long.
I believe so.
That's what they're planning on, so, yep, and then we'll have a freshly painted water tower, should be white with the city logo on it, so, just a heads up, that's what's going on.
That's it?
That's all I have.
Okay, um, let's see, I got HBA meeting here on Thursday, I'm talking to those guys for a bit a while. We got our special assessment meeting, policy meeting here last week, and just again, get that polished up a little bit more. Met with Matt from the League of Cities on Wednesday, and he informed us that the city now has, or the state has officially put our city at five-point-six K for population. So, we're over five thousand officially now, so that's gonna change the ballgame as far as credit fund funds go, so that is a good thing. So, that's all I've got. Let's see, Sarah's not here, Naomi, what you got?
I don't have a whole lot. I met with Jase today, went over a few things. I haven't been able to make it to the, the planning and zoning meetings, because my little five-year-old is in soccer on those nights, so I've been taking time to leave my son so he can enjoy his first round of soccer, so hoping I can get back to that once that's over, but meeting with Jase, so I'm still up to speed on things that are happening with the planning and zoning committee and things that are coming up online, and so, that's all I had.
Okay. Stefan, what you got?
Not too much, we're just working in our planning stages for Bean Days, I don't know if we have any, anything we wanna announce for dates or anything, or we're still in pre-planning?
So, we are going with the weekend after Labor Day, September sixth and seventh, Friday and Saturday. That was due to several reasons, you know, we just feel like everybody will be back, it's not the last weekend before the, before the lakes close, everybody will be back established, and we should have better attendance, I feel, and then we did have some reading concerns, so we'll be pushing it back further. Believe we had some of those, but, yeah, we've got a full slate of events that we're putting together, it's gonna be fun, we'll be working with several local businesses, car show, and street dance, and working on some locations and finalizing all those, and those are ready.
Yeah, so lots of good work going on with, with that committee.
Okay.
No, that's it, thank you.
Jeff, what you got?
We had a MetroCog meeting last week, towards the end of that meeting, they presented their housing study findings, it's an interesting read, I will individually forward it to you, or have Brent forward it to you, for you all to read and to read through it and understand it, and they'll be looking for a member of city council to join that committee. That committee will be members of the voting, one member each of the voting municipalities